All right, I would like to call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday October 28, 2024, 7:00 PM. All rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Hanson.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Jenkins.
Here.
Ben Osberg.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Lanyon.
Present.
I am looking for approval of this evening's agenda unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Some.
Thank you to our support.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity now for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation if anybody in the audience would like to come forward at this time. Yes, Earl, please state your name and address.
Hi, Earl Wolf, 503 Madison Mall. I'm here with Williamson Museum at the depot, just promoting our Veterans banquet. I hope you have one. This is the third annual, really the only fundraiser that the museum has for all the services of this. And we try to have a really classy evening with a great program and honoring our veterans. If you're not a veteran, many people come and they can have the opportunity to stand and say, "I'm here for my dad, I'm here for my uncle, I'm here for my daughter, I'm here for whatever estate their branch of service and where they were deployed." And so it's kind of reverent. And it's been a really nice thing, had a great program. Mitch and I and a bunch of other people are doing a really in-depth search on the whole Walter Estes story. They'll have a really nice program about him. If you don't know, he was the Williamson graduate, class of 57, that was shot down over Vietnam. And some say he was killed on impact, some say he was in Hanoi Hilton with McCain. We saw him there. And it's a story that the older generation will never forget, and we want to make sure that's out there. So we're going to have a nice program that evening, and we hope that some of you can come. And Councilman Hanson was there last year, and we had a program. So just another open invitation, yes, it's $50, but like Jason Hanson, that's why they call it a fundraiser. Anyway, so you'll have a nice evening and hope some of you, you know, can come. So that's it.
Thank you, Earl, appreciate it. And what a great opportunity. It's the third annual Veterans banquet, so definitely viewers, if you need information, get ahold of Earl Wolf or get ahold of the museum, and they can get those tickets for you. Anyone else from the audience at this time? All right, moving along, we have our annual audit presentation for our fiscal year 2023-2024. Christina.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys?
Doing well, thanks for being here this evening.
Thanks for having me. This is the funnest board meeting I get to go to. I've been here when the Boy Scouts were presenting, and now when everybody's dressed up, so thanks for having me. This is a fun board to come to.
Well, thank you.
I'm here to talk about the results of the audit for fiscal year 2024, and I have the full audit report with me, but I did also bring, and I understand you have a smaller packet. We do that so that we can pull certain pages out of there, add highlighting, and add some notes. So that's what I'm going to cover. These are specific pages out of the full audit report as well as the single audit, and I'll get into that as well. So if you turn in the first page of that smaller packet tonight, this is the independent auditor's report. Here's where we give our opinion based on the audit that we did for the city. And the opinion is actually the very first part of that letter. I highlighted the opinion section. Put a box around the most important wording. "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly." That's called an unqualified or unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance that you want to see. So that's the wording that you want to have in that letter. The other parts of the letter talk about our basis for our opinions, the responsibility of management for the statements, our responsibility for the audit. The next page talks about the required supplementary information and the other supplementary information as well as other reporting. So if you keep turning, I'm going to take you to page three. Page three is the balance sheet for governmental funds here. Governmental funds for the city of Williamson include the General Fund, Major Street Fund, and Local Street Fund. These funds are recorded on a modified accrual basis, that's a short-term basis. So these funds will not have long-term information included in them, like loans or debt or capital assets. So the balance sheet will list all of the assets for these funds individually, then the liabilities. We have a category for deferred inflows of resources, and the combining all these, or taking your assets and taking out the liabilities and deferred inflows, excuse me, brings you down to fund balances at the bottom. I highlighted the fund balance for the General Fund. As of year-end, June 30, 2024, fund balance is at $2.6 million. We like to provide an analysis of the General Fund, fund balance at the bottom. General Fund, fund balance of $2.6 million compared to the General Fund annual expenditures is about 108%. That means you have about 13 months' worth of reserves sitting in there. The next page is page five out of the report. It's the same three governmental funds, again on a modified accrual basis. This is the statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance. Here's where you show the revenues coming in for these funds, and then the expenditures, items that went out the door to fund operations. I highlighted three rows from the bottom. Net change in fund balances for the General Fund. As a result of operations, the General Fund had a reduction in their fund balance of about $206,000. Okay? We take that information and then we add to it all of the long-term information. We roll that up to page one, which is the next page. And that first column you see there is governmental activities, and I put a note at the top. This is a culmination of the General Fund, Major Street, and Local Street Funds, and all of that long-term information. This page and page two are on a full accrual basis again. It includes the items we just covered plus all that long-term information. The next column are the business-type activities. These are the sewer and the water funds. Those funds are already recorded on a long-term basis or full accrual basis. And then it'll give a total for the governmental activities and the business-type activities. And then the last column there are the component units, the summary of the EDC, DVA, TIFA 2A, and TIFA 2B. This page is the statement of net position. On this page, we show all the assets, deferred outflows of resources, take out the liabilities and the deferred inflows, and we get down to net position at the bottom. Now, highlighted at the bottom, total net position for the governmental funds on a long-term basis is $8,380,000. And on the business-type activities, again, the water and the sewer funds, that ended at $11.99 million. The next page is called the statement of activities. This is the income statement, if you will, for all of those different categories of activities on a long-term basis. I highlighted three rows from the bottom, change in net position. So on a long-term basis, those three governmental funds had a positive impact on net position of $1.4 million, increased net position. The business-type activities, Water Sewer Fund added to their net position, $1.7 million. And then component units for the year added to their total bottom line as well by $300,000. The next pages are a few of the pages out of the notes. Just wanted to point out some information to you. At the top of page 24, this is note five, due from other governmental units. The city ended with a large receivable as of year-end that was due from other governmental units. I wanted to show you that that was related to that HUD grant, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. It's a lot of money that was due to the city as of year-end. Below that is capital assets. We have to show capital assets for the governmental activities separate from the business-type activities, separate from the component units. But I did want to show you here, in capital assets, you'll see I have a box around construction and process. That's where all that grant money was going in. That's for the governmental activities. Again, that's the General Fund, Major Street, Local Street Fund. The next page, page 25 at the top, it's that same information for the business-type activities, Water Sewer Fund. Again, I have a box around that construction and process, $2.6 million in those funds. A lot of activity happening for the city. The next page at the bottom, this is page 38 out of the notes. We like to include in the reports some upcoming and coming pronouncements that may have some impact on your statements in the future. The first one is GASB statement number 101. That impacts how you calculate compensated absences. Again, the city already does calculate compensated absences. That calculation is going to change a bit. GASB statement number 102, certain risk disclosures, and 103, those may have an impact over the next few years on the financial statements of the city. The next page you'll see is a new report. This is page one of a new report. The city was required to have what's called a single audit this year. When a governmental entity spends more than $750,000 in federal funds, they're required to have what's called a single audit. The city was subject to a single audit this year. This is the first page of that separate report. You'll see that this is the federal awards audit. The next page is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. When there's a single audit, here is where we start. This is a listing of all of the expenditures of federal grants for the year. We take a look at that, we do some calculations, we do some risk assessments on all of those grants that are listed to determine which grant that we're going to test. For 2024, you can see we tested that top grant there. That was the grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We got a grant for about $1.6 million. We did test that during the year. And you can see all of the other grants that were received and spent during the year as well. And this last page is a page directly out of the single audit as well. This is called the schedule of findings and question costs. This is an interesting page because it gives an overview of not only the financial audit, but also the single audit as well. And here is where we would have to identify all of the issues we may have noted. This page has three different sections on it. The first one gives an overview of the financial audit and the single audit. In the first box there is information on the financial statement audit. The opinion was unmodified. There were no material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or noncompliance. So you see no's on all of that column there. This next section is related to the single audit. Again, you see no's in these columns here for material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, noncompliance issues. Here's where we determine or identify the particular grant that we tested, and then here is some additional information. Next section, section two, is where you would find any issues related to the financial statement audit. You can see we have none there. And then the last section, section three, is where you would find issues with the single audit. Again, we have none right there. So that's a page that has just a lot of information packed into it, and I wanted to show that to you. Are there any questions from the board? Yeah?
Does your audit confirm whether the water and sewer rates are set appropriately?
Our audit takes a look at the activity in the water and sewer fund, and we'll, and we give an opinion on whether that activity is materially stated correctly. It does not take a look at whether or not those rates are set appropriately. That's up to management.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve, go ahead.
On the initial part of the report, we have the balance of 13 months.
Yes.
Is there a standard that is in place that we should have from a governmental standpoint as to the number of months that should be there?
There's no official standard. There are some guidelines. I've heard many people say they shoot for at least a 12% to 15%. Based on that, you can tell that the city of Williamson is in a very healthy position.
Your staff does good work. If there's no other questions, thank you so much for being here this evening.
Thanks for having me.
Council, if you do have questions regarding this audit after the fact, if you could reach out to John, you will be able to get those questions answered for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along on our agenda, we have our council meeting minutes of October 14, 2024. I'm looking for a motion to approve unless there are changes that need to be noted.
Motion to approve.
Thank you so much for your support.
Support.
Thank you both. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Branding hand, the opportunity to look at accounts payable for this evening.
I sure did. And on the previous meeting where we had millions that we were sending out, we had a quite light paycheck this time. No questions I had, you know, we had some tax refunds for general expenses that we supplied, so I didn't have any questions for city manager at this time. With that, I would make a motion to approve checks 77888 through 77918, EFT 1180, and ACH 1154 through 1179.
Second.
For a grand total of $110,504.39.
I'll second as you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If no one has any questions regarding accounts payable, thank you so much for the motion and for the support. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. We have one action item this evening, and that is going to be a budget amendment request from our police department. We do have a memo in our packet from Chief Weiss. I'm going to turn this over to Chief.
I will. So VC3 was in here in June to replace a battery backup for our police department server. It's at that time that the tech advisor, our PD server, was at its end of life and should have been replaced. It was replaced in 2016, and it is now obsolete. It should have been replaced three years ago. It cannot receive the necessary security updates that are required by the various systems that we use. VC3 is a vetted, our vetted vendor that complies with, it's called SEGA's Criminal Justice Information Systems, and that's set forth through MSP Lean Field Services. They pass the security awareness checks, and they're the ones that set the parameters for what your computer system and your servers need to comply with because we deal with lean and sensitive material. So that's, it needs to be replaced. The CAN's been kicked down for the last few years, so now it's time.
So Jeff, quick question. If we approve this this evening, when do you anticipate installation of a new server?
They could start the installation. They've already got the quote generated, it's just a matter of ordering it within a few months.
Okay. And so if it goes in the end of this year '24, we're looking at if we stick to this five-year replacement, end of life, and we're looking at 2029?
Correct.
Okay, 2029, possibly 2030. And this is something that you would start working to build into your budget in anticipation of that next five-year purchase?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And John, my question to you would be, with this amendment for this budget, is this something that we're comfortable, we have the money, we didn't anticipate this, but it needs to happen?
Yeah, thank you. Couple things. There's some questions about, you know, the vendor, being a sole source vendor, and I mean, that's true in this case. I mean, as Chief pointed out, there's very few IT vendors that are Lean certified and that can work on stuff. VC3 also is one of the few vendors that provides support, updates for BSNA, which is our accounting software. We still do challenge them on their pricing, you know, knowing that it's never easy to bring any expenditure, let alone one that's a sole source vendor. But we do, we also verify that, you know, it's a fair market price for the actual hardware that we're getting. So we have a number of IT things that we're going to be replacing over the next couple of years, and, you know, we have some machines that we still use that are, we just can't get software updates for them because they're too old. And obviously, this is probably, you know, if the accounting, our server here for accounting and day-to-day operations is, you know, one, this is probably 1A, or maybe even that police word would be in the pole position, so that's where we're at.
All right, okay, great. Does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Do you have some schedule of putting money aside and planning for these other replacements that we need to have done? The IT things that you're talking about?
Well, the reality is that after evaluating things for a couple of years, we're so far behind. We're not going to one at a time. I mean, obviously, the most critical things are going to get updated first. I mean, we're also in the process of moving things to the cloud. We talked about that before, and we did budget for that over a couple of years, but our fleet of these included, I mean, we have a number of day-to-day machines that our employees use that are outdated and need to be replaced.
I would say that that would be one of our main topics of discussion during our goal-setting meeting then, to possibly look at what that timeline looks like for replacement.
So Holly's not here tonight, but Holly, her machine just, you know, left the planet about, it was about six months ago or so.
Yeah.
And then we had to replace it.
Sure.
It just died. And that happens, even new machines can do that. So the good news is, you know, we don't have a, if you use 20 as a good number, I think we have about 20 individualized, some of them are laptops or tablets or desktops. So, you know, they're about $1,000 each roughly, you know, some are a little bit more, some are a little bit less depending on the function. So our goal is to replace them a little bit over time. And now, like, me, I mean, like, really good at technology, but, you know, I'm not splitting atoms back there. I'm sending emails and writing reports, so I don't need a, like, a hybrid machine or anything like that. And I'm also, I'm one of the two people who doesn't like two monitors. So I'm more of a low-impact user on the cost scale, but it's still going to be, you know, eight hundred to a thousand bucks when that machine has to be replaced. But we have had an audit, Treasure and I, we have a list, we have a schedule of replacement, and we'll start moving things out.
All right, great.
Okay, the reason this one is $20,000 and those are only $1,000 is because of your security requirements?
It's the whole server. I'm not an IT guy either, but I understand it's the whole actual server that needs to be replaced, which is quite pricey.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not talking about just a computer. We're talking about entire server.
Yeah.
An entire server, I mean, and, you know, from not this job, you know, the importance of what we're replacing here is that this is the entire backend of police work. And so like, all the information going into the server is going then to my folks and the prosecutors, and that's how we're going to transmit that information over. It's going to lean, it's going to all these other things. So like, yes, the cop cars that we have regularly expensed are sexy, but like, this is just as critical when it comes to police work as everything else. And so like, yeah, it's 20 grand, but like, this is an important 20 grand that we'd be spending.
Is there a comparable server that does things for the rest of government here?
I mean, I'm sure we have a server.
Yeah, we do. We have a server. We upgraded that, what was that, when Cory was here? We didn't upgrade?
Sure, before I started.
Yep. So we've upgraded what's in here, and like he said, we're putting things on the cloud, but, you know, this is necessary for them to do their work. It's past its end-of-life date, so.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about this. I'm just wondering, do we have a plan? Sounds like we have a plan. And do we have a budget to go on with the plan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just real quick to add maybe a little more clarification, as City Manager Hannafin pointed out, we do have an asset list of our desktop computers that we use, and they've identified, I think it was like 12 that need upgraded and about 13 that, I'm sorry, 12 that need replaced and about 13 that need upgraded just to accommodate the newer software. And even in that pricing, the ones that are for public safety, or I'm sorry, police, I'm used to Albin, but Police Department are priced higher, even though you're kind of in a comparable machine, but they're priced higher because of the additional work of having to deal with the lean.
Yeah, the functionality and that.
My understanding, it's a very complicated installation for the lean part. So I'm sure that's contributed a lot to this higher cost, or a server that's a higher cost than what we would typically see. And as far as the server here at City Hall, we're going through kind of a learning period. I'm not a big IT person. I'll kind of learn as we go, because as we transition a lot of this stuff to the cloud, I'm being told we can do away with some of the servers here. So, you know, we may pay a little bit for that software upgrade to get to the cloud, but we can save by not having a server for BSNA and stuff going forward. So we're looking at some of that stuff as we go forward.
Thank you.
Have we looked into whether we, it's more cost-effective to upgrade as we go versus a contract with like Dell or something? So like, my association just has a contract with Dell, and so like, after a certain amount of years, like, they just give us new stuff because we pay for that.
With the, every four years, we get new contracts.
Have we, maybe that's something, especially given, and not that it was under your watch, but we clearly had one for a number of years without paying attention to the efficiency of our computers. Like, is that something that maybe we should look into?
And we are. I mean, when we got some of the initial pricing for the kind of the one-to-one replacement and, you know, this is a family show, so I will use the colorblind, but there's no way that we were going to pay that. We paid pretty much money, you know? I came from a last organization where we had a debt that was through Dell, and VC3 supported it and installed it, but it was a lease program that every two, I think we were on a two-year schedule initially because there was a lot of issues with some of the early Windows operating system. So, yeah, so we're looking at debt as well.
So is there another VC3-type server here? Or is this the one the police company's owning?
We're getting a little bit in the weeds on the server stuff.
Right, right.
But we have a server for general city government and accounting, and the police has a separate server.
Certainly exists.
Yeah.
But that server couldn't be comparable to this in terms of dollars.
We replaced the other one five years ago.
Maybe not even like that long. And they're good for five years, so.
Give or take, and then we were, as we were, one of the reasons we brought the move to the cloud was with the idea that we would not have to fully replace that server, and that we could keep that, even though the cloud brings redundancy from a business continuity standpoint, if there's a major issue, like a security breach or anything like that, we could, we'd still own the server, and we could use that as potentially as a backup to, you know, it has to be backed up regularly, and it wouldn't be in real time, it may be a day or a week behind, but at least we would have some business continuity in the event of like some, you know, cloud disaster, which can certainly happen.
Yeah, that was my question, is whether, you hear about hacking all the time, and it can be expensive. So are we feeling like we're doing the best we can in our, I suppose we are?
I think, my personal opinion, one of my big seller, one of the big selling points I heard on going to the cloud is that it takes a lot of the responsibility off of us here. If we get hacked here right now, you know, they're going to say, hey, it was your server. If you guys didn't do something appropriate in your life. Where if we're going to the cloud, it's all on them. They're responsible for backing up, keeping us secure, doing all that stuff. So I think that's part of, you know, why.
What's about the trust?
Well, and clouds are more secure, right? So like, we just, in one of the counties that I can't disclose, but there was an issue, and the cloud allows for multiple backups. And so like, even if one is compromised, you still have three or four others that are then elsewhere and protected. So like, there's, by being in the cloud, you are safer than you are just relying on your own server.
Right, and I'm told that the people who oversee the cloud are like the best of the best on security protection, where, you know, IT or VC3's good, but I don't know if they're going to be in the same category as the people who are watching over the cloud, who are protecting the cloud.
Sounds like we need to have a motion. I'm looking for that motion. Who'd like to make it?
I'll make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $20,826.00 for the replacement of the police department server.
Thank you, Dan. Do I support?
Support.
Thank you both. Barb, will you call the roll for this, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyon.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Osberg.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along, on our next agenda item is our discussion items. We have our construction project updates, our master plan updates, and our main horse safety improvements. So I'll turn this over to our city manager, John Hannafin.
Please announce it on Williams and Lloyd. We finished the resourcing that was necessary for the punch list, so that is finished, so that's good.
Yes, looks great, too, by the way.
Thank you. Those products are substantially complete. Still keeping eye on the heathens. They're coming in nicely.
Still keeping an eye on the easements, they're coming in nicely. Weather's been pretty conducive to growing grass the last couple of weeks, so that's been good. We did get trees planted on North Putnam, as I reported on last time. Don't be alarmed if the leaves are gone, a lot of leaves coming down. Also, on the, the consumers, or DT or consumers, consumers project down next to Doris Line, so development down there, the retaining wall is up, I don't know if you've noticed that, and today they were starting to move some dirt off-site, and they'll be backfilling soon, and so they're, they're pretty close to being done over there, so that's good.
All right.
Got a, I know these aren't our projects, but there's a couple of other projects going out in town building-wise that, you know, are moving along pretty well. Hopefully, those haven't been too inconvenient. Folks are, some folks have experienced some issues with construction activities beyond our window of construction, which is basically 7:00 AM until dusk, so if that happens, folks let us know, and we'll do our best to kindly remind people to abide by the rules, so.
All right.
That's what we have from construction update. Covered a little bit within the audit, you go through it. Our next projects, we tentatively picked the Red Cedar water main crossing and then the alley water main. We are still waiting for reimbursement from, from the federal government for the projects that we just completed. Once we do that, then we'll, then we'll launch into the next projects. And while we are gonna be, you know, doing this until 2030, our grant is good until 2030, so we have some time to make sure that those funds come in. I mean, we're in a great financial position, but one of the reasons we got there is, you know, all of your wisdom, and I think our frugality on the, on the staff side, so we're in good shape, we're positioned well to, you know, continue doing our water main replacement projects, which is the origin of the money. That's all I have for, for construction projects. For the master plan update, we do have a planning commission meeting, it's actually next Thursday because of the election Tuesday. So, the main themes for the master plan update, setting goals and objectives, and then talking about some overlay districts, we talked about the North Williamson Road or South Williamson Road overlay. One of the other ones we'll be talking about soon is the Grand River corridor overlay. We want to be protective of the residential scale and feel of Grand River heading in both directions, so we'll be talking about that. And then also talking about some downtown design standards. So, that's really the main focus for next week for the master plan. And then I don't have anything to report on main force safety updates. MDOT is still carefully and copiously reviewing our submission, so what we'll say.
All right, great, thank you, appreciate it. Any questions regarding any of the project updates?
So, for the Red Cedar crossing, river crossing, because I'm guessing it'll be the biggest thing we get questions about, what, provided that HUD actually gives us money in a timely manner, crossing fingers, what are you thinking time-wise? Is that gonna be a next year project, or are you thinking that's '26?
Yeah, because of its location, which is the, you know, the McCormick Park and the St. Mary's School parking lot, that'd be a summer project. The project, that project is not that complicated, it's a directional bore under the river, and it's just replacing the main.
Oh.
It's a couple-week project.
Some reason I thought that was like the one where they were like blocking the river and?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, we won't have to put a copper dam or anything like that.
Okay.
They'll just directional bore it, and it'll happen, and it'll be low-impact. We are looking and getting some pricing about renewing that parking lot, what that scope might be, and whether or not that's part of the grant, we should at least get a price while we have a contractor in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did a pretty good job in the last, last summer with adding stone to it, but, you know, there's a, there's a constant issue because we do have the ramp and erosion over time, you know, there are water pools, and we want to make sure that we're being mindful of that situation. And then the alley project, we just walked alley heading towards 109. It's, that's another project that, it's gonna be impactful to those businesses and folks that live there, because the alley's gonna be out of commission for a little bit, but we'll be able to establish temporary water main, so no one will be without water, and then we'll run the temporary main above ground, dig the trench, replace the water mains, and away we go. Again, not a, it's a, it has to be a little more surgical, because there's not a lot of room to move back there.
Right.
But it won't be, we won't have the traffic impacts for the next two projects that we've had in the other way.
Perfect.
Good question.
Yeah, great question.
Just, just curious, how big is the main to go something to the Red Cedar?
I believe it will be, it's either an eight or a 12-inch.
You have another question?
This is with the master plan update, what you're talking about with, for planning commission, you mentioned downtown building standards, I think it was?
Design standards.
Design standards.
Yes.
Now, is that, are you talking about that mostly for the DVA district, or?
Yeah.
Not extending out to like the Williamson Road overlay, but just downtown?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Although, to be, I mean, to be fair, you know, we, as we've looked at the Williamson, you know, Putnam overlay area, we have been pushing for things to be copacetic, as we are addressing the formally concerns as new businesses are going in, because that's really the only place we have to grow, is that we want businesses not to necessarily be the same, but similar in nature to.
Yes.
That's your point.
Thank you.
All right. Correspondence received, information only, we do not have anything, so moving along to department head reports, jumping back over to you, John.
I just wanna, you know, for the public's sake, no city dollars were spent to provide the hollow reed in core today, so it's a sense of respect.
It's just keeping in the spirit of the season.
Since we are on, you know, internet security, Tom's reassured me that the Prime Minister of the two, Uzbekistan, keeps emailing him, it's gonna, you know, give us oil money to help pay for those.
Oh, great, that's fantastic.
Thanks for that, Tom. Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it.
So, I'm glad it was a great weekend here this Saturday.
Yeah.
You know, I was involved in a lot of the planning, my son had a game, so I wasn't able to make it, but saw the pictures, great, looked like a great time. Chief and the reserves did a great job, and Eset participated as well, helping with, with that traffic and helping with overall safety, and, you know, it was a great weather day, and I think it went really well. Events planning-wise, we're super excited about the lights parade and the Williamson Winter Wonderland weekend, a lot of cool things happening for that, we'll be doing Cookie Crawl again, which was a, which is a huge hit. We have a goal of 100 participants in the parade, and so, can't wait to see all of you dressed up as presents, or elves, or reindeer, whatever you choose, so.
That could be fun.
It's gonna be a great weekend, it's gonna be here before you know it, too.
Right.
Which is awesome.
Yeah.
How did Taste of Williamson come out, that, that last weekend, or? I wasn't there.
From what I've heard, it was off-the-charts wonderful.
Yeah.
People were excited to be back and doing that, because it's been paused for a couple of years.
I mean, it sold out.
Yeah, sold out.
Chief, you want?
Sold out, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, so let's segue over to Chief's, Chief's report.
I was, I was a celebrity wearing.
You're dressed tonight, this is your.
I, and I was dressed the same way for that one, so.
Yes, The Taste of Williamson was great, it was packed, sold out.
I think they, they got a lot of funding to fund the generator for the senior center, for a cooling and warming center, and I, I served a lot of food and water, so it was great. And Trick or Treat this weekend was great, we gave a lot of candy for the kids, everyone was safe, and is, there's some awesome costumes out there, by the way, for, for everybody. Besides that, the, just let everyone know, we've been night shift officers that they gave out 2:00 to 5:00 AM parking tickets, so for parkings, make sure people stay off the road from 2:00 to 5:00 and not park in the street. For recruit and retention, it's going great, the, our social media campaign and getting the word out is working. We did have an interview last Friday with a young gentleman, we have two this, this coming Friday, two interviews, and then one yet to be scheduled, so we've got four applicants for interviews, so everything's going great.
Excellent.
In that, that field, yeah.
All right, and I'm assuming you'll be staffed up Thursday night as well for actual Halloween?
Yep, we will.
All right.
We have, I think, three officers working Thursday night for Halloween, so.
Great.
Yep, we'll be, we'll be out there.
Somebody actually asked me if I had the ability to change Trick or Treatin' for Thursday night, because it's supposed to rain, and I'm like, I don't, and it's just, you know, Michigan is Michigan, you're either gonna have good weather, snow, or rain, and usually it's, it always rains on Halloween, so.
Mayor, you should have told them yes until after the election.
Well, yeah, early, you know, early voting, so I don't know if it would have done me any good, but, well, thank you so much, thanks for your efforts, please extend or thank each of the reserve officers for being present and available for this past weekend. I was downtown on Saturday to judge the costumes for adults and kids, and you're absolutely right, costumes were fabulous. There were families dressed up as Allison in Wonderland, a lot of Beetlejuice.
Oh, really?
Beetlejuice costumes. The kids were also just dynamite, Allison Wonderland, she won the adult costume, and the kids' costume went to a very, very creative little girl who made, she was a Big Mac, and she made it out of, I don't know how she did it, but I could definitely tell that she painted a salad bowl brown, and that was her button on the back and front, and, you know, all different things, it was very, very cute, and it also made me hungry, so. But it was just really well-attended, there was trunk and treat in Old Mill Park parking lot, which was great, and then, again, fabulous light pole decorating, I believe that the winners have not been announced on that yet. So, you know, can't wait to see who wins that, but thank you to everybody that came out in the community. Moving along, we've got our committee, subcommittee reports, anybody have any committee meetings that they would like to share?
We had a tip of meeting last week, very short, we did pass an attendance policy.
Okay.
Similar to what others have, that there was some concern from some about those not in attendance and not identifying why they don't attend.
Okay.
And then John continues to bring to us projects that we might be able to use to, from the, to be, that we have the small amount, and we're, we're still in discussions as it relates to the Ice House.
Excellent, excellent, great, well, thanks for that update, appreciate it. We have another opportunity for audience participation, anyone in the audience want to come forward at this time?
You're awesome, you're all awesome, that's all I gotta say.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it. All right, council member comments, I'll start with Tom.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Terry.
I was married to a 70s hippies girl, and I just, I don't know, I didn't recognize her, I just wanted to apologize.
Like I said, I have the peace sign on my, you know, cheek or sunflower or whatever, but, you know.
Did you?
I had disco balls, Terry.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
It's.
The last couple of weekends, as already mentioned, as it relates to activities in Williamson, it just, I guess, echoes for me, when I think of Williamson, I think of family, friendly, food, and fun, and what we've done over the last month, three months, and we're gonna continue to do, supports that. And I am going to bequeath these pumpkins to the city, and recognizing how conservative I am in expending funds, I am donating about $4.
Oh, fantastic, all right, you know, this one keeps a smiling face, so this one costs a little extra, right?
Yeah, they had.
We should autograph that one, then, Jerry.
Don't mock.
Okay, wow, well, we appreciate that, and I'm sure that the city staff will use them wisely as well. Brandon?
First, I think that, you know, we've been through multiple years in a row of phenomenal audits, and so I think that, you know, I just want to thank our, first, our treasurer for doing a phenomenal job every day to make sure that we are always constantly getting great reports, and then our city manager for making sure that, you know, outside of the decisions that we make, but we're only here every two weeks, but, you know, both of them are on the ground every day, making sure that our cities run efficiently, and we can get audits where they have no concerns, so that's phenomenal. Two, similar to what Steve said, you know, I was here working the election during the Trick or Treat event that we had, and Holly ran the candy twice, and so, I mean, I think that over this past year, we've seen a great turnout of individuals showing up to all of our events, and I think it's a sign that Williamson, you know, is a growing and phenomenal community, similar to what Steve said, so I appreciate all the citizens that, you know, keep coming out and enjoying all these activities that we take so much effort to put on, so good job Williamson.
Scott?
Yeah, Brian, I'm curious about the poles, whether they're decorated.
Yeah.
One is like, I keep thinking there's somebody waving across the street. I'm like, I'm like, whoa, and then I realize, no, that's not a person.
Well, that's what we need for our fallaway main, you know, it's just a fake person standing there, so the drivers will slow down.
When you said you were excited about the poles, I thought you had a preference.
Right, I know, right, I'm really, I mean, no, 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 he's worried, he's, light poles, light poles.
Scott.
No, we'll take, we'll take light poles for 500. Dan?
We're gonna make that a permanent addition to downtown, Scott, it's gotta be a Barney Fife cutout with an old school ticket.
Yes, yes, that would be great, oh my gosh.
Just, I just want to say, I'd like to echo what everyone said, that, well, what Brian said about the audit, that's a credit to our staff, and just thank you for the great work you guys put in all year long, so that we can appear to look good. But it's the work you guys do that gets us those good audit reports, and just say good luck to boys soccer in their state semifinal on Wednesday, and then boys football has a playoff game on Friday, so good luck to those, please.
Yep, yep. I just, you know, we've all said it, but I'll, I'll say it from the seat, we couldn't do what we do here at this table without the amazing competent staff that we have in every single position, and I've been through 11 or 10 of these audits now, and every year Christina comes in, and she is just a consummate professional, and it's so good to hear that we are in such good financial shape, so my hats off to our staff for always being fiscally responsible, being able to answer our questions, and we're rolling into the midway point of our fiscal year, so budget workshops are not that far off of the calendar, so we will continue to, you know, challenge staff and with budget questions, and working towards that next fiscal year to make sure that we continue on that, on that path. Everything that's been happening in Williamson has just been off-the-charts, you know, hitting it out of the park, it's been so much fun, and even including the township fall that they had out at the Township Park, I mean, we are a very big, you know, zip code area, but I love the fact that our city has so much to offer that people want to come and participate in it, and wait till you see Winter Wonderland, Williamson Winter Wonderland, and, and, yeah, we all should, you know, walk together as council in little elf costumes or something like that, but, yeah, right, I mean.
I'm ready to approach it.
Oh, yes, you are, quite, yeah, but, you know, just thank you, everybody, for doing what you do, and for being a part of this amazing community, and taking the time, and thank you to our council member for being an election inspector, so appreciate that.
On that, if I could, um.
No, that's fine, I will let you have the last word tonight.
She's not here, but I would like to thank Holly for all the work she puts in for this early voting, and, you know, I worked the first day, and I'll work a couple more days going on, but the first day went off, we had 88 people show up for early voting, which is phenomenal. I worked multiple of the past early votings, and 88 is more than we had throughout the entire early voting period, let alone one day, and zero pitches. I mean, she had this thing down to a T, where we had no problems, everyone was able to work it without flaw, so, I mean, between her and Barb, I mean, they put on a phenomenal job for these elections, and I can't thank them enough for making sure that Williamson runs smoothly and puts trust in the election that is so desperately needed, so I would like to thank our staff for making sure that the most important thing you can do as a citizen goes off without a hitch.
Absolutely, it's your voice, get out and vote, you can early vote through Sunday, and then they'll take a pause, and then Election Day, Tuesday, November 5th, make sure you get out and cast your vote, it's important, and, you know, we will be losing some members of our council this December, I know they will not be far, we'll be gaining some new members to council, and so we're excited about that, and, you know, we'll just see[1789.22]